March fourteenth, Tuolton City Council, regular city council meeting. Uh, tonight, we will lead off with a pledge of allegiance read tonight by Councilor Pratt.
Please place your hands over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next item is a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19 led by Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as, well, first of all, we know that the mask mandate has been lifted and, but it's still up to individuals if they want to wear their masks in organizations. And um, and I mentioned this last week, but I just want to reiterate that people that are immunocompromised are suggested to get a fourth booster, fourth shot, um, three months after the third shot, whether you're severely or mildly immunocompromised. So those are folks with uh, cancer, HIV, autoimmune illnesses. Um, so I just wanted to say that, and those are vulnerable people in the community. As of the last report, we've had six, in the state of Oregon, there have been six thousand eight hundred eighty-five um, lives lost to COVID. And in the United States, there have been nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand deaths in the United States. Here in Oregon, we have over ten percent, fifteen percent availability in our ICUs and um, ten percent availability in non-ICU beds. So we're still tight. Um, anyway, for um, please join me in a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives or are still suffering due to COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. That brings us to announcements, and we have two announcements tonight. Our first announcement is a proclamation declaring April eleventh through fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as Community Development Week in the state of Tuolton, and this will be read by Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I'm reading this. I'm, I'm a member from the, to the PAB, the county organization that helps manage these grants. And so it's a, it's a big privilege to serve on that committee and a pleasure for me to read this proclamation today. Um, declaring April eleventh through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as Community Development Week in the city of Tuolton. Whereas the week of April eleventh through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program and the Home Investment Partnerships or HOME program. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low-end and moderate-income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnerships Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over one million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas the program's history, over the program's history, our community has received a total of one million eight hundred and ten thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars in Community Development Block Grant funds. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that the week of April eleventh through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, is National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and the economic vitality of our community. The council urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, introduced and adopted this fourteenth day of March, twenty twenty-two, for the city of Tuolton.
Thank you. Uh, our second announcement is a proclamation declaring April twenty twenty-two as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the city of Tuolton. This will be led by Councilor Pratt.
Hi, this is the disease that many of you, if you know the actor Michael J. Fox, is probably the most famous person. You're familiar with this. I wanted to read this proclamation because um, this affected my grandfather and a very dear friend. Um, both these men were very avid outdoorsmen, extremely intelligent, and I saw the effects of this as they, um, you know, another thing that's a big part of this is losing your balance, and then you can't participate in a lot of activities like my grandfather flew planes and my other friends would have a biker, and they could no longer do that. And then I saw the mental impairment as the disease progressed. So um, this has really touched me, and I'm glad that someone brought this word for us. Proclamation declaring April twenty twenty-two as Parkinson's Awareness Month in the city of Tuolton. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately one million people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by twenty forty. And whereas it is estimated that the academic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least fourteen point four billion dollars annually, including indirect costs to patients and family members of six point three billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of this disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of Parkinson's disease in their families. And whereas research, education, and community support services such as Pili Group are needed to find more effective treatment and to provide access to quality care for those dealing with the disease today. Now therefore, be it from the City Council of the City of Tuolton, twenty twenty-two,
Yes, Councilor Pratt. You might want, your microphone was getting a little muffled and stuff, so it broke up a little bit. All right, so that brings up to, bring us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda tonight. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. Uh, once you exceed three minutes, I'll give you the high sign to tell you to wrap it up. Uh, if there's anyone here in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. I see a few folks there sitting at the table at the poll center. Welcome. I'm assuming this is for public comment?
Correct, Mayor. We don't have anyone in Zoom land, but we do have four members of the Pili group here to speak tonight. Uh, they're each going to take turns speaking, and uh, Betsy Roof from staff is here tonight to translate if necessary. And I'll get over to them. Give me one sec.
Okay.
Uh, hola, mi nombre es Adriana Lopez. Uh, yo soy, um, yo vivo en aquí en Tuolton, en la ciudad de Tuolton, hace veinticinco años.
Hello, my name is Adriana Lopez, and um, I have lived in the city of Tuolton for twenty-five years now.
Tengo cuatro hijos, soy ama de casa.
I have four children, and I am a housewife.
Y soy participante del grupo Pili.
And I am a participant of the Pili group.
Uh, nos reunimos cada sábado en la librería de Tuolton.
We meet every Saturday in the Tuolton Public Library.
Y me encanta, primeramente gracias por, por estar aquí. Me encanta estar aquí. Estoy muy feliz de, de conocerlos.
Uh, first of all, I'm very happy to be here. Um, thank you for letting me be here, and I'm very excited to meet you.
Uh, hace dos semanas, la consejera María Reyes estuvo visitando nuestro grupo y nos invitó a venir.
Uh, a couple weeks ago, Councilor Reyes uh, visited our group, and she invited us to come attend uh, this council meeting.
Y nuestro grupo Pili es un grupo de apoyo para mujeres.
Um, our Pili group is a support group for women.
Mi responsabilidad o lo que me agrada hacer es coordinar todos los eventos que tenemos en el grupo.
So my responsibility or role in the group is to coordinate events that we, the group does.
Eh, tenemos clase de, de baile.
We do dance classes.
Y también vamos a empezar clases de guitarra.
And we're also going to recently start guitar classes.
Y estoy muy nerviosa, pero estoy muy contenta.
And I'm very nervous, but I'm very happy to be here.
Hola, mi nombre es, oh, no. I'm going to speak in, in English, and probably if we, I can't speak in English, she can't help me, okay? But I'm going to try. My name is Mary Lou Cerrano, and I'd be happy to be here. So I'm a member of the group, Pili group, okay? And uh, and we're here to know you guys, and uh, we're happy to know you to our group, so. And this group helped us a lot, so. No, I want to speak in Spanish. Otherwise, I can't. So. Eh, yo, yo este, estoy aquí y le ayudo a Adriana eh, a coordinar el grupo. Ahorita ya tenemos, estamos este en organizando un grupo de guitarra.
Um, hello, so I'm here and I help Adriana with events as well. And um, we are here right now, and we are about to start guitar lessons.
Y nos gusta saber de ustedes y que ustedes sepan de nosotros, lo que nosotros estamos haciendo.
We are happy to know about you, and we are happy to know, and we want you guys to know about us and what we are doing.
Eh, también todas nosotras somos voluntarias.
Um, we are also all volunteers.
Y, y algunas nos ha ayudado bastante este grupo. Es un grupo que nos ayuda a superarnos, que nos ayuda, okay?
Uh, to some of us, this group has helped us a lot. This group really helps us um, to superarnos. It empowers us um, as women.
Yeah. Et ah, y yo estoy aquí ya por más de cinco años.
I've been part of the group for more than five years.
Eh, y ahorita estamos contentas porque estamos iniciando, ya de hecho, ya teníamos el grupo de guitarra, pero después de los dos años de coronavirus paramos.
So we're really happy about this guitar lessons that we're going to start. Um, we were, we had started them before, but due to COVID, we had to stop for two years.
En ahorita vamos a iniciar otra vez, y estamos buscando donadores de guitarras para todas las miembros o miembros.
And we're about to, to restart these classes, but we are looking for uh, donations of guitars because we need guitars um, for the members of the group.
Estamos muy contentos de todo eso.
And we're very excited about all of that.
And thank you.
And thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Carvajal. I'm very glad that you, to meet you guys. Um, I'm kind of nervous, but I'll try my best. Um, I've been in the group, uh, Pili group for, by almost six years. Um, I came to this group because I was, um, I had a lot of chronic depression, and the group really helped me. And it was established by this lady. Her name was Pilat Alcántara. And she created this group, and I'm very happy that she did because it really helped me a lot through my depression. And it's nice. Thank you.
Hola, mi nombre es Gregoria Azate. Soy, soy participante del grupo. Y solamente les quiero dar gracias por el espacio que nos, que nos otorgan en la ciudad de Tuolton. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Gregoria Azate, and I am also part of the um, Pili group. Um, that we join every Saturday, and I just want to thank you for the space that you provide for us to meet um, at the library. And thank you.
And thank you, Maria Reyes, por la invitación.
Yeah. And thank you, Councilor Reyes, for the invitation for today.
I'm very glad you came, and uh, yeah, keep in touch. Let us know what's going on. Uh, because we can always tap networks to find guitars. It's good to know uh, that you need them, so we can all reach out to people we know and see if people have some good, uh, have some guitars they can donate, uh, so you guys all can learn how to play guitar.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are all so excited. You know how.
Great. Uh, Councilor Reyes.
Who, who can they can, who can they contact if they have the guitars to donate?
Um.
Is it any guitars? Can they, can they say the name of whom or they can contact? Or can that be done separately, or?
Yeah, who's, who's organizing the outreach on behalf of the group to get the guitars? And we can, uh, if, if we can get their contact info, uh, then we can put it out to reach out either by email, phone, whoever they'd like to coordinate getting the guitars.
Oh, um, so it's, it's, they can, they can, um, or, or, so, 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 you can do this too?
Sí.
So, Mary Lou?
Yeah, yeah, I am the one make uh, all the group and uh, make organization for the guitars and try to be everybody's one. Yeah, and I'm so happy.
So we'll, we'll coordinate through Betsy. How's that sound to find out, you know, if we, if we find, if we stumble upon some guitars? We'll get ahold of Betsy and route them through you. Betsy, how's that sound?
It sounds great, yes.
I just want to thank them.
For attending tonight. And go ahead, Maria.
I just want to thank them. Gracias porque vinieron y por el apoyo. Just, I just say thank you for attending this meeting and for the support. And I look forward for uh, more interaction with this group. And um, thank you very much for the opportunity to, to meet you all too. Y gracias por la oportunidad de conocerles a ustedes también.
You're welcome.
Gracias. It's a pleasure to be here.
No reason to be nervous. We're all friendly.
Okay.
And like, eventually, we'll see you in person here soon.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good night.
Right. Uh, anyone else space for public comment?
There is nobody else for public comment.
All right, thanks, Megan. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. These items are considered routine. It would be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like it removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of five items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Number two, consideration of approval of late liquor license renewals for twenty twenty-two. Number three, consideration of resolution number five six zero six dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds dedicating right-of-way and granting easements for the Tuolton Sherwood Road widening project. Item number four, consideration of resolution number five five nine nine dash two-two, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the Tuolton Sherwood Road widening project. And finally, item number five, consideration of resolution number five six zero five dash twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds acquiring easements for the Southwest Sixty-Fifth Nyberg Sanitary Sewer Trunk Main Rehabilitation Project. Uh, would anyone like to have an item pulled and heard separately later tonight? See, and then do I have a motion?
I'm moved. Second?
I have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda as read. Uh, Councilor Sacco?
Hi.
Councilor Brooks?
Hi.
Councilor Reyes? Councilor Pratt?
Hi.
Councilor Hillier?
Hi.
Councilor President Grimes?
Hi.
The chair votes aye also. It's unanimous. That brings us to special reports, and we have our Tuolton Moving Forward Quarterly Update uh, with Mike McCarthy and Katie Mangle.
Good evening. I am uh, I'm Mike McCarthy. I work for the city of Tuolton as a transportation engineer and the Tuolton Moving Forward Program Director. Uh, Katie's actually on vacation, so she won't be joining us this evening.
Why not?
And uh,
This is more fun.
Yeah. Um, so I'll start sharing my screen here. And you should all be seeing, seeing PowerPoint. And we'll go to the view show mode here. All right, can you all see the PowerPoint presentation now? Okay. So this is the Tuolton Moving Forward Quarterly Update, and, which we do quarterly. Thank you, Captain Obies. And uh, so tonight's theme is just around the corner, and we'll be talking about the projects that we have coming up, particularly for this coming summer, and then some of the ones that are underway now. And, you know, as always, uh, updates on all the projects are at tuoltonmovingforward.com. So here's our map of our current projects. And uh, you know, we have a few that are under construction. They're almost finished. Uh, we'll talk about Martinazzy Sagert in a moment. Um, still working out of Fiftieth and Wilkie, uh, particularly once we can get the gas line moving, get the contractor in and do what they need to do. Work will be starting very soon once we get rail approval on the Tuolton Road from this week to Park, or basically from the police station to the Park, um, project. And we're working uh, on also on Garden Corner Curves, uh, contract with back about in April uh, to do the permanent striping, and then there's some pavement corrective repairs that they need to make, particularly at Paulina and One O Fifth. And then, um, I think we talked a few weeks ago about the project on Boons Ferry Road and all of what we're working on for this coming summer. And then particularly the bigger aspects of the project where we'll need to be acquiring right-of-way, those will be coming next summer. And the neighborhood traffic safety projects that we talked about a few weeks ago. So that's on Martinazzy, up near Fred Meyer, and then flashing lights at the crosswalk at Mohawk. Um, Avery out near Tuolton Sherwood Road. We're on Boons Ferry, um, sort of the west side of Boons Ferry and the north part of our downtown, or by the Nurses Building. Uh, the Sagert Bridge, and then on Sixty-seventh and Sixty-eighth Avenues in the Stone Ridge area. So uh, those are all coming that we don't have slides for tonight. So Martinazzy and Sagert, uh, we believe this one is finally just around the corner. Uh, the signal, the controller just passed the full state testing. The state has a pretty impressive testing lab where they actually simulate full intersection operations and traffic showing up in different places, and even like weather and making sure the cabinet withstands rain and everything, so that once it actually gets put out, it works. And just passed that, and the final detection pieces just came in to, um, so we anticipate that coming in real soon. And I don't have a specific date yet. I think I'll believe it when I see it. And uh, so that's coming real soon. Um, we're also working on the Tuolton Sherwood Road Martinazzy I Five project, and that'll be coming for next summer in twenty twenty-three. We're working with ODOT on that. And that is uh, Nyberg and Tuolton Sherwood Roads approaching that. And then also, because of not the best bike facilities in the interchange area, that project will also include quite a bit of work to route cyclists up Boons Ferry and then across the Greenway Trail along the river. I am the beautiful trail at Parksville fairly recently, that's uh, goes under I Five next to the river. Uh, so that will be coming up soon. And, you know, we know about a lot of the big benefits coming with that project and uh, significant delays getting to I Five, that we're reducing. Uh, we want to talk a little bit about the Ninety-Fifth and Avery project. And part of that has been built this year, and part of that will be coming uh, this summer. So you've probably seen the crosswalk in place at Ninety-third and Sagert. And the always stop at Ninety-Fifth and Sagert. And those were a couple of big changes already. Um, the always stop has really changed how this intersection is working. Now, right now, there's a developer working to build a small subdivision in this area that is redoing some of the ramps on the southeast corner. And then our project uh, will be coming in and rebuilding a couple of the ramps in some of the other corners. And then, um, we have some more detailed slides, some of the other areas here. This is Ninety-third Avenue near Sagert and the Tuolton Heights Apartments, which I believe you all heard about a couple of weeks ago. And uh, this will include new sidewalk along both sides of Ninety-third. The north end there getting up to Sagert Street, uh, will include a stormwater treatment planter, which is the green. And uh, some other elements there, including the expanded speed zone along Sagert. We found that a lot of the kids walking to Tuolton Elementary were coming in from this way. And then at Ninety-Fifth and Avery itself, we've got some pretty big changes coming here. And particularly where we'll be restriping Avery to add a center-left turn. This will be a pretty similar section to Avery to the west at Teton. Uh, we also fit in a center-left turn lane there approaching that always stop at Teton. We'll be able to do the same thing here at Ninety-Fifth. And then, one of the big issues we've been hearing about is with this crosswalk particularly. And southbound vehicles on Ninety-Fifth make a right turn across the crosswalk. And right now, they just get a green circle indication, and then, but because they're turning right, they're required to yield. And what we plan to do with the signal change is to make it much more clear that instead of getting a green circle, drivers will get a green, yellow, or red arrow. So they won't be turning right across the crosswalk. We think that'll really help with our crosswalk safety right here. Uh, and the project would also include some new sidewalk on the north side here uh, in conjunction with our sidewalk street tree, um, our sidewalk repair program. So big changes coming this summer around Tuolton Elementary. And then, uh, the Hazelbrook area, as you may recall, we did a big survey of the community uh, asking really what they wanted to see in their neighborhood in place of the original planned project to construct the signal at Tuolton Road and Teton Avenue. And because our analysis said it wasn't really ready for a signal yet, we then asked the neighbors, what would you like in your neighborhood? So the projects that came from the neighborhood and then came to the top of our survey were restriping Hazelbrook Road, which will include bike lanes on the south side, and then paved shoulder or bike lane, depending on what would fit on the north side. Redoing the Hazelbrook Jergens intersection. And then uh, restriping Jergens, keeping the parking on the west side, uh, but striping in bike lanes. So by visually narrowing up the road, we think we can reduce speed somewhat there and provide clearer space for cyclists. And then uh, flashing lights at the crosswalks along Tuolton Road, uh, so east of Jergens, uh, right at Teton, the One O Eight, and then just east of One Fifteen. So uh, those are all in response to the survey, and we were impressed to get a hundred thirty-six responses there. And then here's some more photos of what's coming. And then here's some more photos of what's coming. Bike lanes on Hazelbrook, intersection improvement around Jergens. Uh, bike lanes on Jergens and then the flashing light crosswalks. Uh, on Twelton Road. And we're still working on the sidewalk along the northwest side of Highway ninety-nine. We just got our final signed design exceptions from ODOT for this project. So we're. Reaching milestones there and, uh, getting sixty percent plans. Later this week to review on that one. That still we anticipate, uh, construction in twenty twenty-three. And I think I'll stop sharing in case we have any questions and any other thoughts or things you'd like to bring up.
Questions for Mike, Councillor Pratt.
Thanks for the great work overall, but I do have a question, this is kind of personal. Um, on that, where are the lights going in at Martin Azzi and Sagert? When you're heading south from up the hill from, um, Fred Meyer, you know, the, the lanes have changed. So if you're going straight now, you want, you need to be in the right lane as opposed to left lane. And it took me a couple of times to get it, but, um, last weekend I was going up the hill and I was in the right lane that went straight. And there were the, I know there's a little sign on the hill that says traffic change head, but there was a person that was, probably had a good decade on me. And, um, they just kind of veered in front of me, so I'm kind of concerned about safety there till we all get used to. That change in the traffic pattern there, is there, can we put stripes or I don't know, something to help people kind of wake up and. You know, because you get so, oh, you're almost home from work and.
Yeah, yes, so we have a couple of new signs coming. Um, one will be a sign on the side with the left and through right and then it comes left through right and then a left turn must turn left sign. Be on the left side of the road there. And then we're planning to add a couple of lane use arrows farther back. So just past the crosswalk. Planning to put down one arrow that would say left turn only and then the right lane be a through and right. Not sure how I can give me through right arrows with my hands here, but a left and then a through right. Uh, which we hope will help people, uh, figure it out a little earlier.
Okay. And thank you so much for putting that bike lane in there with the nice green paint.
Okay, well, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mike? Councillor Brooks. Then Councillor Reyes.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks for all the great work that you're doing. I know that I don't just speak for myself when I say that I'm really proud about what we've done with the bond and. And how you guys have been managing this and, you know, even with, um. Changes in your directors and everything else and still doing great work. I almost wanted to make a comment today during consent because I'm very excited. About the Twelton Sherwood Road widening project coming through. And I was curious with the lane addition. Over by the freeway entrance, if you could explain. How that dovetails with the future project of the Twelton Sherwood Road widening.
Okay, and, uh. Am I assuming correctly, you mean the county's project to widen Twelton Sherwood Road like from Teton West?
Yes.
Yeah, because that will. Open up one bottleneck, uh, you know, in the western part of Twelton Sherwood Road. That's, uh. So we do anticipate a fair amount more traffic coming through once that gets built, uh, because they can get through. And then, uh. So we anticipate more traffic east bounds getting to the interchange as well. Uh, so right now what we're seeing. As you're on Twelton Sherwood Road and Nyberg coming up the interchange. You know, we're seeing. Most of the people going to I five are getting into the right lane. And the right lane goes to I five south and then people are also getting. Excuse me, into the right lane early to get to I five north. And then that backs up for a ways and then people are starting to trying to jam their way in. Um, more like near Fred Meyer. And then they can't get to the third lane to get across to Nyberg or turn left into Cabela's. So we anticipate some pretty significant capacity improvement just from rerouting the lanes. And so the right lane goes to I five south, the center lane goes to I five north. And, uh, and then the left lane. Would then be open all the way back to Martin Azzi because of the way that area would get widened. And so people can then, we can pull those people out of the I five line. And get them over to Nyberg, over to Cabela's. And that will, uh, help the traffic move quite a bit better, we think. Did that get to the question?
Yeah, so you're saying with the addition of the lanes that the county puts in that that will help with the re-striping part that we're doing? And I don't know where their lanes, like, I don't, I don't quite understand where. That project stops, the county project.
Okay, the county project stops just to the west of Teton Avenue.
Twelton Auto Body.
Oh, I know right where that is.
If, so that's where, if you're heading west, Twelton Sherwood currently narrows down from two lanes each way to one. And when the county's project is finished, it'll be two lanes all the way through. Um, from there all the way to pass Highway ninety-nine.
Okay.
County project ends is just a little west of Teton.
Okay. And I, I discussed too, I, I've said this before, but I have a curiosity around if there's been thought about adding a right-hand turn lane. On Teton. Because, um. That backs up and especially if there's going to be work going on around there from Teton going north. Anyway. Thanks for helping me understand that and I'm hopeful. It's my most, it's the one I'm most excited about, so I'm looking forward to the striping. And I know a lot of other people in the community are too.
Good, thank you.
And thank you.
Councillor Reyes.
Yeah, I just, actually what councillor Brooks was saying, it's, it's sort of what I was thinking. Because I did have a couple of businesses on the, I didn't know that. They keep asking me about the project on Teton and I'm like, oh, project on Teton. So I think it's the one that it's from the county, like, um, I didn't. Didn't, in my mind, I was thinking it was part of our bond or like part of the Twelton Moving Forward. Um, but, um, that's what they're talking about, because there are several businesses. That are, um, north of, is it north? I'm now I'm getting confused with Teton and Twelton Sherwood, well, that business park on that side. North of that Sherwood Road. Um, we're talking about, uh, the projects that's happening in a Teton and I live on. Teton and Seled, so I was like wondering what they were talking about. But thank you for clarifying, so that is what is from that part east. Is it east or west, sorry? Is what the county is working on, is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, and they're gonna re-stripe the roads? Because, I, I'm sorry, I'm confused, um. Maybe because where I'm sitting right now, I'm getting things confused. So on that Teton Road and Sherwood, what part is the one that the county is working on?
So on Twelton Sherwood Road west of Teton. So like if you're going north on Teton and then you turn left on Twelton Sherwood Road towards Sherwood.
Okay, that's what.
And then it narrows down from two lanes to one lane.
Right.
Um, the county's project will continue the two lanes. Um, all the way through the western city limits of Twelton. And all the way to the, to Highway ninety-nine W.
Alright, thank you very much for that and the other question I had is that. Um, I know you said that we will have the lights on Martin Azzi and Sagert coming turned on pretty soon. Um, when are we gonna celebrate that, do we have a date? I'm just really excited about that one, because I've seen so many crazy events there.
I'm excited as well, I think. The contractor has told me next week.
Next week?
But.
Okay.
I, I think at this point I'll believe it when I see it.
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you very much.
Uh, anything else for Mike? Councillor President Grimes.
Thank you, um, I have a question and I apologize, Mike, if you covered this and I just missed it, I apologize. The, um, construction for Twelton Sherwood Road that's gonna lead on to I five. Adding extra lane. When is that scheduled to begin, do we have a, a tentative schedule start for that?
Um, that's scheduled for next year, so two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, um, I, do you know approximately how long that construction will take? And are we developing a really good plan to manage traffic during that construction time?
Yeah, I can see the concerns, that area is so congested already. Uh, what we're designing. And I think the. We'll be looking at that pretty carefully. And fortunately, we're trying to design it so the more of the work is on the outside of the road. So that we wouldn't have to be closing lanes more than. We can minimize the amount that we'd have to close lanes in order to get the work done. Uh, I think the part that. Could involve more closure is the median work. Kind of along Fred Meyer between Martin Azzi and the Fred Meyer Cabela's signal. Um, that I'm a little more concerned about. And I think we'll try to work out some of the specifics of like maybe limiting the contractor to working at certain times of the day. Or the night. When, uh, when we can disrupt traffic less. Because, yeah, that's one of my concerns, if we're doing the whole project to try to reduce congestion, I don't want to make it massively worse in the middle before it. Gets better. Um, so we'll try to do what we can to limit, uh, disruption.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, I mean, obviously there's always disruption projects like that. I just, the, um, with the new apartment complex that's, um, down in the old RV park. I mean, it's gonna be uproaring by then and that's gonna put a lot of traffic on Twelton Sherwood and a lot of commuter traffic and. You know, I just, there's so many, um, either accidents, near accidents. Traffic backups there, it's like any kind of creative way we can come up with doing. The work off hours, weekends, nights, that's expensive probably, but, yeah, that would be terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mike? Alright, well, thanks, Mike, uh. You know, it's always positive news, it's always, you know, things are getting done on time as close to budget as possible. Uh, with, uh, COVID, uh, I know the. We're doing well on costs, it's the timing that's killing us on, uh, trying to get some of those materials with the supply shortage overseas, but. It's eventually gonna happen, but we just had to be patient and, um, looking forward to, as people mentioned, the new traffic light. And looking forward to this county project, uh, finally happening after, I don't know how many years I've been waiting as the city council for it to happen. I know they started down in Sherwood already in construction and with these easements, I think people are gonna be, uh, very happy with the additional lane, but, you know. Uh, my concerns, as you alluded to, is it just might fill up all over again, even with the additional lane. Uh, but at least hopefully things will be moving a little quicker than the, uh. You know, renowned parking lot that we have sometimes at, at, uh, Twelton Auto Body when it, it bottlenecks down. Uh, and then just last thing, I obviously is the county coordinating with UPS and Pacific Foods and all those guys. Because that is gonna impact them big time, you know, the UPS trucks pouring out on to Twelton Sherwood. This is their gig, not yours, isn't it? Or is it shared?
I mean, we, for that big county project, they would be the ones to coordinate with. All the different businesses around them, um, I think we can pass on word to. You know, tell them we, they need to make sure that they do that.
Yeah, that and, uh, I'm sure the Twelton Police Department might be engaged a little bit too with. In the first few days, people might, uh, lose their patience and. And as was alluded to, we don't want to have any accidents there when, uh, you're making that right from. Teton on to, uh, Twelton Sherwood Road heading toward Sherwood. Because that's why I think where it was alluded to, I see a lot of the brown trucks back up, you know, making that right.
Yeah.
They might blame us for the. You know, people that don't know might blame, and may think it's a city thing, it's a city project versus a county project. And they might want to contact us and tell us, hey, what are you guys doing?
Usually, usually the county is very proud of putting out the, uh, big M-stip sign saying you're, you're M-stip dollars at work. It only took ten, fifteen years, but their dollars have worked.
Yeah, I would anticipate them putting up at least a couple of those big signs for the project, uh, which should help, and I think. Uh, I can pass on the word to coordinate with them and, you know, get their website information that we can then link to.
I mean, because you're already seeing the impacts around one twenty-fourth with. The construction of, uh, buildings going up and I think I think throwing some of the pipes in right now. Where Twelton Sherwood Road is pretty much down to one lane on each side around, uh, one twenty-fourth sometimes.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thanks for coming tonight and, uh, appreciate your update.
Thank you very much and, uh, have a good evening.
You too. Alright, that brings us to items removed for consent, we didn't have any, uh, any council communications. Councillor Hillier.
Um, thank you, Mayor, I'm just wondering, um, I think probably everyone's aware that the Twelton High School men's basketball team. Won the six A state championship for the first time ever and I wonder what the protocol is for. The council to potentially ask the, um, students to come and be represented and for us to do a proclamation. Do some sort of way to honor them, and I hear from other counselors on committees that we're short of youth on things. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to do some outreach and, and recognize youth for great things and, and so. If there's a way that I could help coordinate that, if that's the wish of the group, I'd be happy to help with that.
Yeah, and then in the past, they used to come to the city council meeting in person. We'd use a photo op and have a plaque, all kinds of cool stuff. Um, uh. Hopefully we can put something like that together fairly quickly, it's kind of. Be a letdown to do it in Zoom. You know, but we'll figure something out where we do, we do give them recognition.
Thank you, it'd be worse not to do something at all.
Exactly, you're right, yep, we'll figure something out, but, yeah, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, I'm happy to put some, oh, sorry. I'm happy to re, I'm happy to reach out and, um, while it's virtual, like, we could still invite them. We could do a proclamation, uh, that's what we did for the track team when they. Um, ha, they won and I think we've done it a couple of times before, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Not the women's softball team, but that's okay.
Kind of like tonight, they could sit in the pole center and, uh. Well, kind of, you know, and, uh, so we can see them on camera and stuff, so.
Oh, we did have the softball team come.
Yeah.
We had a proclamation for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, I was thinking too, um, if it's too, um, not exciting enough to have them come to us. I mean, if the school is doing an assembly or some sort of a special recognition, we could maybe send. Um, a representative, send the mayor, um, to the high school at the assembly and maybe need something special for them. Or have some of us go that could make it so that it would be. Live. If the other thing is too.
Alright. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, had a couple of things, I just wanted to, um, say happy Women's History Month. I also wanted to remind people to fill out their parks survey if they've seen it and they can look for it. On social media, online. And there was another thing. Um. Shoot, um. Well, we do want, um, student leaders to step forward and request people to participate on the, um. On the Parks Advisory Committee as well as the Arts Advisory Committee. Um. And there are also ways to, um, sponsor the traffic box wraps. Online for businesses and individuals. Um. And there was one other announcement that I can't remember, but nice to see everybody, thanks.
Any other announcements? All right, uh, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor, raise your hand and as a yes.
Aye.
All right. Any knows? That's it. Good evening and have a very nice evening. Uh, thanks for joining us tonight. Take care.